Well, according to one block, it's the witching hour. I just want to say that advanced friends, my voice is not quite with today. So I will be using this. There's something wrong without here is the right time. There's the right place. And I also have a creak in my back. Pitched nerves, so I've got to stand up. So Art is usually telling us his medical difficulties. That's my report. I hope you will not offend him. So let's begin with our meeting then. Open the meeting. The school board with pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The, uh, I called the meeting or I did call the meeting or I will do an entertaining motion at this time. Oh, and I want to mention that our friend, colleague, Ken, our colleague Art and Dinah are not here this evening. Dinah had a family emergency and Art has had some health difficulties in operation. So he's in a recuperative mode. So we will have a forum. So we will proceed and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I need to approve those or not?
Discussion. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, both say aye. All right, now we're open for public comments. I got the number of people signed in. Glad to hear it. And glad to see it. And as Art always does, I want to read the guidelines we have for participation in this board meeting. A board meetings are not community hearings or public forums. Can you still hear me? Is this okay? All right. They are meetings of the board with discussion between board members, the superintendent and the superintendents designate. While the meetings are held in public, they are not open to public participation except as described in items two before below. Two, there are two times on the agenda for public input. A during the meeting to comment on specific items on board agenda. And B, an open comment time toward the end of the meeting for public comments, whether or not they are related to the meeting's agenda or not. And three, comments can be delivered in three minutes. It's out here in the gas. This is not an opportunity to make a formal or extended presentation to the board. If the presenter wished the board to have more information, the presenter is invited to present further comments. And finally, the board will not enter into dialogue with community members during the comments periods. It is an opportunity for the board to hear from the community members, but not to enter into a policy, into policy or program discussions. On matters of the day-to-day operations of districts such as policy, curriculum, academic standards, et cetera, the public is invited and encouraged to meet with the superintendent. Okay, we're open for comments. I forgot it's out. Well, I got it. Kate Nassin, Anne Brosby, Ken Van Dusken, Ken Van Dusken and Stan Yanis, would you, anyone want to go for our first part, which has to do with items on the agenda?
I checked. I checked. No, I wanted to talk about.
Okay, all right. How will we do that at the end since we're?
There's a place in here.
Okay, well, let's do it before we enter your art. Yeah. I don't want to miss that. Okay, that, we have her handled. We'll go on to our board member comments. And I will start on my right this evening.
Well, last night in the forum was really neat. I guess we actually, we all got some really good ideas that I hadn't heard before. So I thought that was really, that really helped me. You know, I didn't know what everybody was feeling. So I loved that open forum, everybody talking. That was nice in talking with people afterwards and asking questions. That was very cool.
I too really enjoyed that public forum. I felt like we had some good suggestions from the 14 or 15 people who spoke. And I, well, I'm excited to have a special meeting to discuss that. I think that will be good. And I would also encourage students who are attending to us during my last session.
Okay, I felt very much the same about the meeting last evening. Very much appreciated the number of people. I can't, 15, I think, Dan, you had a hundred more.
One hundred and sixty-five.
So I thought, considering a rainy, stormy night, that was really, you know, quite a good turnout. And it was good. I appreciated the people who spoke and I also had an opportunity to speak to some of the people who didn't speak. And so, including the family, that wonderful little girl that taught last evening. So I found it a good opportunity to meet some folks. But I was reminded a couple of weeks ago of the diversity of needs that Feller continues to perform for our community when I got a call from Joan and it was my time for the cold weather vigil. And so I went down there and who's the gentleman? Steven?
Steven Elrich.
Steven Elrich? Yeah, so he and I, there was a guy there. And so Steven and I ended up staying all night at Feller, slept on Art's gift mattresses. And, you know, conversed with this gentleman, gave him some stuff for the evening and a little bag of stuff for breakfast in the morning. Made sure everything was in order and locked the building up and left it there. But that's a reminder to me of how important Feller is and the function is central, is one of the functions that he performs for our community. I also gave some testimony a week, a couple of weeks ago to the legislature. There's a, I was contacted by WASDA and there is a new, there was a committee that wanted input, information on upcoming bills. And there was a bill on public, the public records bill is being looked at. And so I was able to testify for that. And quite to my surprise, somebody actually has proposed a new bill. And I've got that, I think we've got that on the website. You know, okay, not yet. But I'm sending the stuff to Denise that I get from WASDA. And so there'll be regular postings on our website for, if you want to watch legislative action, legislative materials that are particularly important to WASDA, that'll be one place to do it. We have a conference call tomorrow. If I've got any news, I'll make a little message. Well.
Um, why don't you pass?
Well, okay. Then we'll move to student board comments. Am I supposed to read this stuff about Inzley proclaim?
Now, I would.
Oh, there. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Really great. I'd asked Herb Gerhart what he was doing to celebrate the school board recognition month. He had enough, he had plenty of it.
Okay. So Governor Inslee has proclaimed January as School Board Recognition Month. And he even made a quote that I thought was particularly upper hoe in his letter that he sent out and posted online. This is from John Adams in 1785, talking about what spirit should be. And he says, "The whole people must take upon themselves the education of the whole people and be willing to bear the expenses of it. There should not be a district of one mile square without a school in it, not founded by a charitable individual, but maintained at the public expense of the people themselves." I thought that was particularly appropriate to a time when we're recognizing the school board. And I'll just ask my agenda just a second. And so this is School Board Recognition Month. We each have a certificate at your place that we provided as well as a really wonderful gift from the student body at the high school in recognition of your service on the school board. And so, thank you. And I will read the proclamation that has been starting to be our habit to read those proclamations aloud when we have them. This isn't as long as the last one, but bear with me, everyone. Whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's 295 locally elected school boards and nine elected educational service district boards are the core of the public education governance system in our state. And whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 million students, have a combined annual budget of nearly, of nearly $11 billion, and employ 160,000 people. And whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies, policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school directors are directly accountable to the citizens in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school directors and educational service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education, now therefore I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, hereby proclaim January 2016 as School Board Recognition Month in Washington and I urge, encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Thank you, everyone, for your service. Thank you.
Okay, we're now at this point to the consent items. Consent agenda enables the board to deal efficiently with matters that have been delegated to the superintendent, but by law must be approved by the board. Items on consent agenda are voted on and as one block and approved with one vote. And items may be removed from the consent agenda only upon the approval of a majority of the board. So is there administration recognition to accept this agenda? Is there any questions or comments, anything you'd like to?
No, I highly agree with you. Consent agenda is for summer.
Lauren, I was particularly pleased that there was a start philosophy club as the last item. And I think that's just wonderful for our students to recognize the life of mine as part of what they want to experience in high school. And of course, they will, it's just another opportunity. Okay, board development linkage.
I need to vote on that.
Oh, yes, that's, that's absolutely right. I would entertain a motion at this time to vote on accepting the consent agenda this year.
So.
Has it been moved that we accept the consent agenda? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Now we're up to superintendent update, 12:15, 16:00.
All right, we begin with our budget status report for the seniors.
Thank you to the school board and School Board Appreciation Month. I did supply on the link that you should have on there, a summary of December's budget status update. I'm just going to briefly go over just a few key points. Our revenues were up slightly from budget, I'm sorry, our revenues were lower slightly than budget, so a little bit lower than what we budgeted. And our expenditures were a little bit lower, so those kind of go hand in hand. And then as far as our enrollment goes, we're still about 60 head count plus above budgeted projection on enrollment. So things are, are good there. Did you have any questions about the budget report?
I just want to ask, was it as you expected or do we get a surprise of a hundred students?
No, it's staying actually pretty steady. Usually it drops a little bit, but the average is staying pretty steady. We're down a little bit in, in January's count from the previous month, but overall we're still right at over 60, about 62. It's pretty good.
Does that include the running start students?
It does.
And how many students are in that program?
The running start? I think we have about, that's what I was going to say, about 60.
Okay, thank you.
And then one more thing I just wanted to share. It was just very interesting to me. We do have the CEP program, the community program in our two elementary schools for lunch. And for the month of December, we had 13 days this month. And last year in December, we had 14 days, so just one additional day. And just comparing those two years in December, this December, we served 2,094 more breakfasts than last December. And we served 1,381 more lunches than last December.
Now, is that because of the nature of the program? Because we were able to?
To offer it free.
Okay. So this is the first time?
This is the first time that we've offered it free in our two elementary schools to all students. And it's really telling with breakfast because a lot of times I think that when parents send their students or their children to school, if, you know, if they have a choice, they usually feed them breakfast at home, get them out the door, and then they usually always have lunch at school or bring a lunch. But we served, just as a quick overview, we served 3,618 breakfasts just at Belfair in 13 days. And we served 3,254 breakfasts just at Sand Hill in 13 days. And then the lunches were 4,500 plus at both schools.
Wow.
So 9,000 lunches in 13 days.
Why, why is lunch bigger than breakfast?
Because some, some still eat breakfast at home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But last year, last year, we served about 1,200 less breakfast just in the month. So you could kind of tell that that's really been a popular meal for a lot of the students.
So does that include families? Do families come in and eat as well?
No, just students.
Just students?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
And we have a pet, just so I get it straight, we haven't had this in place before? We got funding for it?
We have not. We, this is just kind of a trial program that, that our superintendent has implemented with our food service director just for this year. And it's something that we're trying out. It's, the revenue seems to be pretty steady. The food service is a little odd anyway when you claim the money for that. But in this case, you have to, you have to certify people in different ways. But the money comes after you feed all these meals. So we really haven't seen a lot of what it really looks like overall. I think it's going to take a whole year to just really see if it, if it's been something that's really eating, I guess if we're coming out in the red or if it's something that's costing the district a lot. But so far, it seems to the food service director, Michelle Waller, she just think it's been running pretty well and she's running very nicely.
And in the longer run, could Fender pick it up if we filled out all the forms right?
Most of it.
Most of it.
If we do all the forms correctly and our families do too. So we're, we're dependent on people to also do their paperwork correctly to be able to get the funding.
All right.
I have to, I want to make a comment about it. I visited with my son, he's in kindergarten, and we went. And he goes, oh, I gotta go get my snack for breakfast. And I'm like, oh, okay. So I followed him to see what it looked like. And I didn't know the, if we could pay money. And I said, no, 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 it's free. Don't worry about it. And I came in there and so I saw what the, the thing is. And he finds his number and puts it in. And I don't know if he remembers this, but he's been coming home with this, this number. And I'm like, I don't know where you get that number. It's not your number. I don't know what you're talking about. It says lunch number. But they're, they're wonderful and they can, they can pick something small, just a little bit, or if they just want some juice or some chocolate milk or something, they can just have that. And then they, they work a, a system where if the kids don't use their milk, that they can use that for lunchtime so that the kids don't, that bring their lunch, they don't have to buy the milk, which would, which was the deal that I was wondering about before. And so they have kind of a little reserve of what was left over so that kids can go ahead and dive into that at lunchtime. So it's really cool. It's really resourceful. They're really, really awesome there.
Is there a possibility that this could move into the middle school as well?
The way that it would, what would have to happen is that families would have to record themselves as leading public assistants to a degree for the middle school families that they have at the elementary school families. And so that, because that's really the difference in how you qualify is families who have applied for that assistance and that percentage is somehow, it's a formula related to our students in the school. So it's not our free and reuse lunch percentage, it's a different percentage that gets us there. So we weren't close, but we weren't there before. So it's something that Ms. Waller will be working with to help me educate our community on how they can help us make that happen.
That's all I have. If you have any more questions?
Okay. We're now down to capital projects.
Yes, so just very briefly, things are moving smoothly on all fronts. We are working on the pencil list on the high school at this point. We anticipate PACE will be completed already for the staff of the meeting around President Simeke for a week. We're so pretty excited about that. The project at Hocken, New Hockings Old High School is going gangbusters. If you've been up to a high school and been in the parking lot, you would see the portables are gone, there are big sections of outer parts of buildings that aren't going to be there anymore that are gone. They have pretty much finished getting the inside. They're ready to start framing in, back, putting classrooms back in at this point. So it's pretty exciting how complete that they're working.
The next thing I have are a couple of recommendations that I do recommend to the board that you approve. We have two sets of recommendations that I included. As you know, we have a board policy for naming facilities or parts of facilities. And that includes in holding a public meeting, asking the principals to manage that meeting and asking the principals to make recommendations from the information that they gathered at the meeting. So we did have a meeting in November at the new high school auditorium. That was, I think, our first use of the auditorium. It was very well attended. Some of those people are here tonight. Ken was there. And we had a lot of really good recommendations. The principals are making three recommendations to the board. The first is that we named the new high school auditorium, the Tony and Smith Auditorium. The second is that we, when the project is finished, there's going to be a beautiful parking plaza with a flag display where Hockings is. So it'll be, you know, between our new buildings and the stadium and everything will be a really beautiful part of the whole facility. And the recommendation is to name that plaza, the entry plaza, the Alfred Smell plaza, and have a really nice monument there for Mr. Smell, who donated land and also a good part of his life to make him this, this high school and this happen. And then the third recommendation is to name PACE in its new location, our alternative programs, altogether James A. Taylor High School for James Taylor, our teacher of 40 years?
Yeah.
Who, who lost last summer. So those are the three recommendations that I have for you to consider. I strongly agree with each of those recommendations.
All right. Our facility giving recommendations, I would entertain at this time a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
All right, is there some discussion?
I think it's entirely appropriate for all three of those recommendations. Actually, at least jokes be a little bit. So that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Okay. Review of Feller community meeting.
Okay, well, you kind of did that in your comments to a degree, but there are a couple additional comments I wanted to make. We had a good attendance last night. We had 14 or 15 people speak. One community member, Mr. Ben Westford, did submit written comments that I've already tweeted today and I pointed out in my email. And I hope you'll get a chance to look at that. He had some very good recommendations in his written comments that should be included when we consider the recommendations overall. But I do recommend that as the next step might be to do some research on background information to support each of those recommendations so that we could, for our office to do that, so that we can hold a study session and talk as board and leadership a little bit in more depth about what some of those ideas might require and might need. And so then we could give us some direction about what else we need to find out before we maybe talk to the public again or have go further, move anywhere further. So I really think we need to have a study session, provide you with some background information, talk about what other information is needed and.
Okay. Well, that requires action. So I would entertain a motion at this time that we accept the two or three points that our superintendent just made. And structure to move forward for preparing us for appropriate background information to look at each of the options that what they would entail for the, that came out of the meeting last meeting, what they would detail if they actually, any of them were accepted.
Okay, I move that we direct the superintendent to schedule a study session to consider all of those options that were raised last night. In addition to camps.
Yeah.
Let's get it all together in one camp.
All right, is there any discussion?
No.
Okay. Then I think it's a good idea to, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Okay. Then we're on from the new information item, transportation certificate of achievement.
Yes, and actually I have another information item that we have to share as well that we can give on the board on the agenda. I do want to read this aloud to you. It is a really wonderful meeting that happened again. And Tom Coletan, as you know, is now, is ill, our transportation director, that I think for most of the years, he's been the director of our district, if not all of them. He has received a similar award. And again this year, he received a certificate of achievement for outstanding school bus inspections during the 14, 15 school year. Our district has completed the all inspections with exceptional results. And he has the congratulations of the career of reaching to Puget Sound, OSPI, Puget Sound ESD 121 and ESD 140. So wanted to recognize Tom and his team for their excellent work in keeping our kids safe, especially since almost all of our kids write of us.
All right, that's great.
The other piece of recognition that I wanted to bring to your attention, unfortunately Dinah couldn't be here last night, but we did receive communication in December that at the WASDA conference that we all attended, the School Board Directors Conference in November, there was, Dinah was able to complete all of the requirements for a new recognition program that they are putting together while she was at that conference called Valuing Individual Proficiency. So they sent her a certificate for achieving all of those, going to all of the correct trainees and receiving that award. And I wanted to help them recognize that.
All right. Let the record show us. Okay, very good. Spoke about community linkage planning of the passage of the month. It's just discussions. Does anyone have anything in particular that needs to be brought to our attention? And then I just wanted to ask, do you have any particular theme that you think significant? I found it up for one, just to kind of hear some of the ideas that.
Last night, I think there are several strengths. I think it'll probably be really useful for us to gather some data to support those for you guys to take a look at.
Great, great. Okay, there's no further discussion of that. We will vote for our fellow coming comments. We're all part of that. We will vote for our fellow coming competitors who are all part of that committee. Dinah's in February, Art is in March, and April will be a joint letter. So assurance run, item four now, assurance of organizational performance and policy review. So monitoring reports and policies review. Oh, did I do? Where did I miss?
B.
Oh, reimbursements, oh, where?
Three B.
Okay, all right. Employing reimbursements going to ACH.
I'll talk a little bit about that. What we'd like to do, and this really isn't, it's not a requirement per se to go to the school board, but it's recommended by our ESD that we bring this to the school board as an action item.
And since I don't have all the acronyms.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Educational Services District.
Okay.
So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to move our employees that maybe go to trainings and do different things where they put in for reimbursement from the school district. We'd like to pay them by kind of like a direct deposit, it's called an ACH instead of... Right now, if you drive somewhere and you get a mileage reimbursement, we print a warrant for you for $5.90 and then we mail that out to the person. And it's just kind of a costly process. So we just kind of wanted to update our procedures. And by doing this for our employees, we actually save money. We don't have to do the warrants, but we also can alleviate our stale warrants. Most of the stale warrants that we do have that we then have to turn over to the state are from employees. And they're usually for those small checks that people get that they don't bother cashing or they put somewhere and they forget about them. So the reason that we wanted to bring this to your attention is because this is going to affect people's personal bank accounts. It's the same information that we have on file for their payroll. It's just this different system, ours is going to deposit money to that same bank. So we're just...
That's a way, quite easy, so too small of a bank, so just do it and then make sense. Okay, I just like to know, I get the Educational Services District.
Oh, ACH?
ACH.
Oh, it's automatic clerms.
Oh, okay.
For automated clerms.
Right, okay. Transparency is so important dealing with your offices. So I would entertain a motion at this point to accept the recommendation that we adopt the system that has just been explained to us.
So we moved to...
Any further discussion?
I think it's a great idea, that's awesome. I wish more people that have to use the warrant system could do something like that.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now I can turn the page, my friend on call. You can be on track there. Okay. We're now on monitoring reports, and we've got none at this particular meeting. So this is policy review, and I guess this, we're the ones in charge here. This is the board's opportunity to discuss the purpose and or revisions to the policy, and we have reviewed them. So we're voting, I guess we'll vote on this. Who of us are cussing?
Oh, we voted on them at the last meeting.
Okay. That's right, I see the action is above the other. So, yeah, the ayes are going too, so... So, I guess that's just for our information segment, have any comments? Okay. I can't believe that brings us down to number five. That's where we are. So, did we, okay, our board values the opportunity for input of the community. This is an opportunity for the public to offer comments on issues, whether or not they are on the agenda on matters of the day and to date as a operation of the district as policy curriculum academic standard to set with the public is providing the courage to meet the superintendents on those last several issues. So I've got here five names, I got Kate, Ann Crosby, Ken Danbusker, Peggy Danbusker, and Stan Anderson. There's no reason not to go in that order.
Great. Well, last night I did attend that Feller meeting and I found a lot of the ideas very interesting, but I also saw some of the things that I wanted to bring up. A prominent and respected gentleman in our community last night at the Feller forum tried to inform the public, school board, and district of informational requirements that must be known and considered before action is taken on the Feller problems. His intentions were to inform, protect, and make this the best community we could back in the U. Ken was the only person rudely interrupted and stopped by the moderator for making his statement. This came, this same rudeness had been shown to Ken at school board meetings. He wasn't allowed even one minute to speak. This board and district no longer is open to this public. There is no interaction, respect, or a showing of their fiduciary responsibility to their constituents. The public can make public comments or ask questions, though we are informed they will not interact with us. The board members are all public elective officials. It is time for stability to the public be restored. We vote you in and we can vote you out. I also noted that all four board members sat in a room making a quorum of members. And my question to you is, were you having a meeting? Did you talk amongst yourself? Was that an open, public meeting? It appeared to me to be. That's my kind of picture.
So, and next to him, oh, okay, Ken now, about in. Okay.
Thanks.
Ken?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening, and thank you for hearing me here. I wanted to follow up after last night a little bit, and I sure didn't mean to offend anyone. I'm very passionate about Feller. I was, I was trying to explain why it's important for the community to understand what the problems are so that we can avoid making the same mistakes as we live forward. There is a memorandum of understanding and an access easement agreement that was entered into in 1991. It's set to expire in five months. It has potential safety issues and conflict that could occur between trail users and the duck hunters that hunt on school district property. That's going to need to be mitigated and addressed, whether we reestablish the MOU. The concern is that that access easement agreement is perpetual. And it was put in place at the same time. That easement agreement requires the school to pay a third of the road maintenance on that portion of Roselle Road that was behind the gate. I think that trail users and waterfowl hunters alike should be made aware of these important guiding documents, and they should be given an opportunity to comment as well. Perhaps the most important guiding document of all of this is that 1953 will. The community's already been through this what-to-do process with Feller in the late 1970s. And that 1953 will played an important part in that decision process, as it should now. It's also referenced as a guiding document in all of the educational grants that were received in the 90s to build those trails. In my opinion, there's a few things that need to happen before any informed decision can be made. These aren't in any particular order of priority. There has to be a legal finding on what can be done, not an opinion. There should be an independent forensic audit of both the Feller Trust and board. The current disposition of the physical property needs to be made public. If the Feller Board of Directors had directors' insurance, claims need to be submitted. There needs to be a comprehensive compilation of all Feller guiding documents, wills, the 1980 environmental impact statement, grants, long-term obligations, restrictions, easements, liens, memorandums of understandings, and letters of agreement. And they need to be available to the public. Once these items have been accomplished and the public's informed, then the board, excuse me, the board will have informed comments to make a decision. There's been a lot of community discussion about the roles that the trusts, the banks, and the lawyers had with the Feller Trust.
Ken, it's okay to take a little time, but it's 8:30.
Do I have one more sentence? I'll just repeat what I just said. There's been a lot of discussion about the roles of the trusts, the banks, the lawyers with the Feller Trust. However, as evident in the Feller Board minutes of 1989 to 2002, there were others, local folks that were involved in managing the Feller as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for offering those remarks. Thank you.
I have a whole nother subject to talk about.
All right.
In a recent newspaper article, it talked about support by the board of proposed Sweetwater Trail Project. I am really for exercise and trails. I'm not so sure I am for the making of a new trail with lots of switchbacks. And I think that since there are trails there already, that if those existing trails could be maintained, it would be less expensive and less liability to the school and the environment. And I'm for exercise, I'm for trails. I'm afraid that the new buzzword for grants is exercise. So I would say grants come with strings, as we all know, in the Feller.
Thank you very much for that. Stan?
No, I checked, no.
Okay, all right. Right, we're here, didn't see it. So, all right, we have announcements and comments, marshalls. Oh, I greatly appreciate, I greatly, among the things that I appreciated is, I appreciated Ken's generous observation, generous invitation to take a walk on the trails. And I would certainly like to do that, maybe after the O, or other than... Well, we can chat and get a time and date, and if anybody else would like to go, I think that's good, colleagues on the board would like to go, we can work it so that, you know, we're separate patches.
Do it again.
Yeah. But I think that's a great and generous invitation.
John, if I might, I'd rather not there be any form of the board.
That's what John said.
Okay, well, that's, I guess, comments, oh, how about you guys? All right. So, board self-assessment, will this is?
Self-assessment first, or do we do the second assessment?
Oh, we do, that was, yes. Oh, yes.
But this way you can do it while everybody is still there.
Yeah. Well, I think it's altogether appropriate since I could have a meeting, I agree myself. We're all in this meeting together. Well, I thought the agenda was well planned, to focus on the real work of the board. I thought we followed the agenda, did not rob ourselves to get sidetracked. In fact, when I was made a mistake, we actually corrected it. Board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting. Clearly, we know about the policies that we've talked about before and various of the ones that were on the agenda this evening. And the board's deliberation, decision-making process with public are being proceeded without interruptions or distractions. Participation was balanced. Everybody had an opportunity to speak, members listened to Ken, avoiding side conversations. Work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust, openness, and meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy. I can't see any reason to say we weren't satisfactory. Government's principles review. Board actions per policy level, whether the operational level, that's true. The board reviews policies about each topic before discussing that issue. Adhere to that clearly. In writing additional policies, the board starts well. We didn't write a new policy today, so that hardly applies. The board minimizes time spent monitoring pass-through performance, that's true. Board routinely dedicates time to reviewing and improving its own process. But we didn't do that this evening, we're not doing that each one. And the third fact, we revise some of our proceedings from time to time and may do so in the future, means that this is an ongoing process, it's not just written stuff. The board clarifies priorities and values from considering the potential outcomes, benefits, and costs of outcomes. And the board follows an annual calendar, we did that. Board chair helps the board efficiently conduct this meeting. Here I am judging myself. I thought I did all right. The board spends most of its time delivering issues, defining and clarifying its vision, and linking with its community as opposed to fixing things. I don't think anyone's accused us of fixing things. So the board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of policies. I think we're okay on all that. So, that brings us to our next item. Our next board meeting date will be on February 18th at 6:30, right here. And I adjourn this meeting at this time. We will go into an executive session for approximately 20 minutes. No action is expected as a result of this executive session. So I leave this meeting to conclude.